Mayor Bauer.
Here.
Mayor President Madre.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Burtis.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
You have a quorum, Matt.
All right. Alderman Rivers, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Pledge of.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, we have a special presentation. We were supposed to do this last week, closer to Veterans Day, but because we had to cancel last week, we're doing it tonight. So, the city would like to honor this. Couple of years ago, we honored our World War II vets, of which Mr. Douglas is here, reminding us that we honored our World War II vets. But today, we'd like to honor our Korean War vets. So, in the neighborhood, to our knowledge, we have two. Mel?
Can I stand up?
Mel, can I get you to step up here, please? Can you get around all of that?
Mel?
Mel.
She's calling you up.
The city of Jamaica Beach would like to honor you for your service to your country and your dedication in service. And it's from the city of Jamaica Beach. And here's a proclamation recognizing you. Okay. And I, the other Korean vet we have to honor is Mr. Bobby Crowe. And he's not able to join us, but his daughter.
Yes.
Ms. Suzette Hurd is here.
Yes.
Thanksgiving.
Yes.
We very much in here again. Proclamation honoring him.
He's got a lot.
And how much we appreciate his service.
He'll come to you.
Actually, if we can, Mel, now that you've shuffled all in there, I should have asked you to stay up. And Mr. Douglas, we need one more picture with you, since we're honoring.
Where are we gonna go?
Right here. Right here.
Am I gonna stand by my friend Melvin?
That could be dangerous. Y'all might start fighting.
Right here.
You're good?
You're welcome.
And I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank Alderman Jones for helping coordinate that. Okay, next on the agenda is public comments. And I guess maybe to break it up, we will go one from the phone and one from the audience. But to start with, we'll start with Mr. Bob Friedman.
Hi. I'm Bob Friedman. I reside at 16903 Beach Cove Road Drive, and I've been a resident there for over ten years. The issue that I want to comment on is about the beach nourishment project. It's a question really, more than anything. In your beach nourishment project involving the GLO and the Army Corps, what is planned for protecting the existing beach cove section, drainage easements, and pedestrian access easements that go to the current beachfront or high tide line? I previously set forth my concerns in a prior letter, circulated. And so, I'm just looking for some answers more than anything.
During open comments, if it's not on the agenda, it's not something we can actually discuss. But, you know, we'll try to set up a meeting with Mr. Pitaro. And it is on our radar. We recognize your issues.
So, you know where I'm coming from?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, what was your name again?
Robert Friedman.
Robert?
Friedman.
Friedman. Yes, Robert, I've seen a couple of your letters. Nice to see you first. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Esther, do we wanna see if we can patch in Zachary Strickland?
What about gun?
You going? Yes? Once again, we ask for a bit of patience as we try to improve on our technology options.
So, I just need him to unmute himself. He will have to start six. It's like a lot of his mind.
You can hear me?
Yes. I'm sorry? Mr. Strickland?
Did you call for Zach Strickland on you? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so, this is Zach Strickland, and my property is 1654111. I just wanted to comment on the short-term rental ordinance in regards to occupancy. And, you know, I came here fully prepared to discuss the Supreme Court ruling and the semantics of a transgate act, prepared to discuss the International Fire Code, new code for fire truck road width, and all the things that come down to the letter of law. But to me, that's not my preferred, very basic topic. And honestly, I think it creates a divide between the owners that rent their homes, that's a short-term rental, and the owners that live here permanently. I'd like to think that we are all fair and reasonable people, and just want what's best for the Jamaica Beach community that we all love. From what I've heard in my discussions with owner-occupied homeowners and owners that use their home as a second vacation home, nobody wants a restriction on the number of guests that they can have at their home. If there's an owner-occupied guest in the audience, or on the city council for that matter, that has a three-bedroom home and is willing to restrict the maximum number of people at their home to eight, and to believe that this will significantly contribute to the overall safety of the community, I would love to hear from you. But just remember, this maximum occupancy will include your newborn grandbaby and your two-year-old toddler. If the owner-occupied community believes that this is a safety issue, as stated in frequently asked questions to the short-term ordinance, then how opposed the occupancy regulation be changed as a general ordinance for the city of Jamaica Beach, which should not be restricted to heads and beds, but the total gathering size, and of course, you know, the safety concerns of the overall being of the Jamaica Beach citizens? Let out the threat all to be fair and reasonable. I think the majority of the short-term rental community loves this city and wants to see it flourish. As a matter of fact, there's a dollar consideration for a new program for adopting the road, which I think is a great, something that I personally wanna be a part of. I think the maximum occupancy, based on a permitted room, will eliminate the homeowners or businesses that are coming in and put in, that are putting in non-permitted rooms and filling them with fifteen, twenty people. I personally support the general idea of having maximum occupancy for these short-term rentals, but I think a reasonable number is two per room plus four. My four-bedroom home was built, designed, and specifically engineered to comfortably accommodate three couples with two kids each, for a total of twelve. I think if the city wants to change the rules for newcomers, I think that's fine, since they know what they're signing up for. For the current short-term owners, we signed up, invested in the community, and have built a great experience for our guests, based on a different set of laws that were in place at the time. Changing this now and forcing us to sign up for new laws for lose our license.
Mr. Strickland, you've reached your three minutes.
I started a little late, and I finished my last tough thing.
We started it when you started speaking, Zach.
I believe the current, so, you know.
Thank you. Okay, next is from the audience, Mr. Brandon McDermott.
My name is Brandon McDermott, I live at 16527 John Davis. And Jamaica Beach is my home. As I've mentioned before, my grandparents lived here, my parents lived here. I was born and raised here and have lived here for forty-five years, and now raising my kids here. My grandpa Red found a Seven Seas Grocery, my mom and uncle still rent to this day. My aunt and uncle live here, my dad has been both a member of this Jamaica Beach Council and former president of the volunteer fire department. In fact, then the trucks were green, and you only knew they needed you because of loud sirens on the top of this building. When the name was passed into the short-term rental less than one month ago, our city took a step in the right direction to protect this neighborhood for its residents. I don't understand the need for re-discussing the ordinance tonight, and certainly not for considering the mandate of two-plus-two maximum occupancy, two-plus-four. Was there outcry from the eighty percent of Jamaica Beach that don't own SDRs that our neighborhood might be a little less overrun by renters and party house? Did the eighty percent of people on Jamaica Beach who don't own SDRs suddenly get super concerned that this ordinance might attract more families and full-time residents back to Jamaica Beach? And despite the implications made by many, the SDR is not some covert ordinance. Many of the people on this council campaigned and ran to get SDRs under control and are only fulfilling those campaign promises. Short-term rentals are not just a problem here in Jamaica Beach, they're negatively infecting communities all over Texas. Kima, New Braunfels, San Marcos, Rockport, Frenchburg, Freeport, and Morphe Falls have all enacted a two-plus-two maximum ordinance. If we go back and change ours to two-plus-four, it will not do anything to solve our problems, but will actually make them worse by making Jamaica Beach a beacon for other short-term renters looking to find a place to put their property. No longer will they look at other cities who have a two-plus-two, they will all focus their efforts here. And trust me, those cities won't be happy to listen. The amount of people calling into this meeting on phones from out of town should serve as a very clear reminder that our city is trying to get influence and run by people who aren't actually living here. How many of them are sitting at home far from here right now, enjoying a neighborhood that doesn't have an SDR problem, while trying to tell us in this council that we shouldn't be able to do anything to make our neighborhood better? How many of them are raising their kids on a nice quiet street without their neighbors squeezing twenty new loud disrespectful renters into a house every three days while telling us in this council that our kids don't deserve the right to have quiet streets? Because our neighborhood only exists as a place to be exploited for additional income opportunities. There's more work to be done, but this ordinance as written, the maximum occupancy of two-plus-two and the inspections is a good start at putting the residents first. It makes our community safer and more appealing to residents and potential buyers who want to live here and be a part of what makes this city great. And you might just go down this generational piece of legislation that saves this neighborhood. If you all accomplish something great for this community and its residents by passing the ordinance as-written unanimously at the last meeting, you should be proud of that decision. Now is not the time to look back, but to look forward and represent the city and the residents that live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Esther, can you patch in Jeff Wright? Raise your hand.
Hi. Did you say Mr. Wright or Miss Wright? They're calling here. Yeah, so. Anyway, we, we're not popping out. We're not popping away, we're at 16556 Pompano Way. I've been calling to speak on this new thing. I actually don't, I don't think it's right. I think you're discriminatory. I'm sorry, am I speaking?
Yes.
Am I still allowed to speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't agree with this, I don't think it's right. I think it's discriminatory against homeowners that decide to rent their house in addition to using their homes. I think it's, I think it's wrong to go ahead and use the excuse of international fire standards when we got very good fire standards here in Jamaica Beach, in the state of Texas, in the United States. I mean, if we're gonna start just fighting international codes and things like that, why don't we just turn over the city government to the US? I think this is, you know, it's a not equal application of law, and I think this is completely wrong and unconstitutional. That's my opinion, I think you folks are wrong in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay, next, Mr. Mark Sloan.
Hi, everybody, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Mark Sloan, I live at 16531 Jamaica Cove Road. I've been full-time resident here in Jamaica Beach for over twenty-five years. If you were to ask me five years ago, I was against SDRs. I really was. They were loud, they were on police, parking problems, foul language, fights. But I've noticed almost all of those problems come from a very few houses. I mean, I could, at least in my area, I can tell you there are certain culprits. Most of them are just fine. The vast majority of them are just fine. There's too many people involved in the house, and I can't, I can't argue with that. You know, this is my home, this is where I live. And today, I really feel like SDRs, you know, can also be really good for Jamaica Beach. A lot of money coming in from them that we don't have to pay out in taxes ourselves. If they go away, guess what? Our taxes are going up. There's lots of money in the community, restaurants, bars, fishing guides, sunset cruises, whatever you have. And I think some of this polarizing also is, you know, it's not the same as our crowded beaches. I think everybody gets mad at everybody, but that has nothing to do with our crowded beaches, that's a totally separate issue. I applaud Jamaica Beach for passing the ordinance, I really do, I really, it took a lot of guts to do that. But, I do think two-plus-two seems a little punitive to the good runners. I really do. Two more people allowed to be is not gonna make any difference at all to any of us for them to be able to advertise four instead of two. But it makes a big difference to them. And in the interest of fair play, I really would like to see two-plus-four. I think that's reasonable, I think it's not as polarizing. It's a little compromised. And so, that's my opinion on that. More enforcement of complaints would be a good step in the right direction. Talk to people inside the stores, none of these drive-bys that the police do sometimes. I want people to talk to and told, if you don't cut it out, you're out of here. Give the police some teeth. Because it doesn't seem like they have that, oh, we can't do this, we can't do that. Well, I think the ordinance was a good start to give them some teeth. And also, this will go over real good, residents need to comply too. It can't be specific to the rents, it's gotta be across the board. So, we all need to shut up a little bit sometimes. I know some, there's some problems with full-time residents that make too much sense. Thumbs up? Okay, that's pretty much everything. I'd just like to see less polarizing in this community, and I think this would be a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Nick. Right, Esther, you ready to see? We can patch in Jamie Flores.
I do not see the number for Jamie or Marisol. Or who? Marisol?
I'm here.
Oh, Jamie, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so I got a couple little things to say, nothing too much. But basically, same thing that the gentleman just talked about, that if the rules go for short-term rentals, oh, and I'm sorry, 16613 Currie Road.
Thank you, we actually have it.
Yeah, wind down and wind down, the two houses are there. And yeah, basically, if the houses apply, the rules apply to short-term rentals, like what my wife and I do, and to counter the other man who was talking about, that we as short-term rentals don't live here. My wife and I do live here as much as we can. We love Jamaica Beach, it's our dream to live here, our long-term goal is to live here. So, we bought here, and we happened to make it into a short-term rental business, following all the rules that we could, including giving twenty-five percent of our rental income to a local business, Wolverton, they manage it for us. We could have chosen anybody, but we chose to give it to Wolverton. And we did that on purpose, because we believe, you know, we, on purpose, we, you know, we chop local, we go to Seven Seas, we go over here to the corner, and E-Pix like today, or Daqery's over here in the corner. Sorry, I had one earlier. But, the fact is, the fact is that we're just trying, we're just trying to make our home be able to generate a little bit of money, to cover the property taxes that go straight out the roof every single year. But we do live here, we have a representation. Our goal is not to have our home be used as a party house, you know, nobody wants that. And we do have the best interests, and we do have rules that we put aside for every single renter to sign and say, no loud noises, you know, I treat it like it were my house. Yeah, no loud noises after ten PM, no, no, no parking on the street, and all of this stuff, you know, as if it were our home. Anyways, I only have, main thing to say is that we do treat it as a home, and the rules that apply to short-term rentals should apply across the board. That's really what I have to say.
Is that right?
Huh? Ms. Wright?
Yes. Ms. Marisol Garza-Flores is not in attendance, is she?
She's right here.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Wright. Okay, perfect.
Hi, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, Ms. Wright, one moment. No, she was.
No, it's okay, Ms. Wright's next.
Okay, Ms. Wright, I apologize, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, is Marina Wright, is it my turn?
Yes, miss.
Wonderful, thank you very much for the opportunity. Marina Wright, 16556 Pompano Way. And I'm online to talk about short-term rentals. The first issue I have is that we need to apply the equal application of the law, so if it's been applied to short-term rentals, it needs to apply to residents as well. Number two is occupancy tax is two times as much as our property tax that community does receive. And to let you know that we are very conscientious about our properties. So, we make sure that every single renter is sleeping in a bed, no fold-out couches, no cots. We are very cognizant about safety. We are very good owners for our rentals. And I'm curious, because you have, you have considerations for fire code for short-term rentals, but those don't apply to residents, which leaves me to say you care more about the short-term rental participants than you do your own residents, which I'm sure you don't. But in looking at this, and looking at your international fire code that would apply to short-term renters and not just towards owners, it brings up a lot of questions for me. I appreciate you and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Ayers.
No.
Okay, thank you. Al Ayers, 4821 Jolly Roger Road. I just wanted to talk about, and maybe there can be more discussion about, the fire safety at SDRs. You know, if, if you do new construction, there's an inspection prior to occupancy permits, and then going to look for fire alarms and wiring and egress or escape requirements, whatever you wanna call it. But, when there's SDRs changed from personal residences, and there's a, in my opinion, there's a lot of remodeling that goes on that may or may not be permitted. And I really think that we need to go in and do a fire code inspection. I mean, we've got a volunteer fire company here, and they do a great job, but I think we need to consider them and consider safety and be able to go and do that. I think there needs to be more discussion. I don't know how it all was planned on work, and I know it's been mentioned here on who would do it and how it would be done, but I really think that's something that should be strongly considered. Thank you.
Esther, you ready to patch Mr. Paul Salvo in? Yes.
Mr. Salvo, you can unmute yourself. Mr. Salvo? You can unmute yourself.
Do they remember how? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, awesome. This is Paul Salvo, and the address is 16610 Jamaica Beach Road. And I have some concerns and regards to the new rulings for the short-term rentals. As mentioned before, I have a four-bedroom unit, and I can accommodate three couples with children. And the current ordinance, where it states two per room and two only, does not work. But the two-plus-four, or the two per bedroom plus-four is more amenable. And I manage property myself. I've had management companies, they don't care about my property. So, I decided to do it myself, and I overlook the property, I manage it closely. And I have two others with no other problems in other areas of Dallas. And alongside of that, I actually reached out to the fire department, I mean, excuse me, the police department, several months ago, about a notification that I put in my windows that Jamaica Beach doesn't have, and it says, "Notification, this property is covered by the power of attorney by the order of Dallas Police Department. Violators will be prosecuted." Now, I have no problem putting something like that for Jamaica Beach in my window, and I mean, if there's a problem, the police have full authority to go into the house and take care of the problem. But inside of that, I don't have problems at that property, even though it's on the beach side. I manage and I monitor that, my guests, very closely. And they all do great, they get five stars, you know, we do. I care about the property, and I care about Jamaica Beach. We bought this house almost three years ago with intentions of... We bought this house almost three years ago, with intentions of maybe retiring there, and in the meantime, doing some short-term rental. So that's what I believe we should have, the two plus four per room, and that's, that's what I have to say about it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Rennick?
Aaron Rennick, one six five oh six Trinidad. Hello, this is Mayor and Alderman Hall. Four hundred and fifty dollar application fee, inspection of property prior to receipt of official permit to determine occupancy, number of parking spaces allowed, device to detect and record decibel levels, ensure health and safety standards, and permit valid for one year and a renewal afterwards. An orientation is mandatory to take a class to understand and agree best practices, a signed statement not to advertise occupancy on the permitted allowance, noise ordinance violation of three hundred and fifty dollars per occurrence, posting outside the operator name, number, maximum occupancy, maximum vehicles allowed, and also no more than the max occupancy can consume alcohol on the premises without an off duty officer present between the hours of ten P M. and six A M. This is the ordinance for the city of Kima and their short-term renters. So I say in contrast, the recently unanimously passed ordinance is totally tame in comparison, and I believe that it should stay in place without revision. In addition to this, I'm starting a rock band called The Vocal Locals. And I must say that all the garbage online has stirred up, stirred up a hornet's nest of support against the S T R owners. I've heard almost zero constructive criticism, mainly just criticism, and it needs to end. It does absolutely nothing for their cause. I don't want to disrupt the S T R owners or their ability to earn money, but enough is enough, we need rules in place, it needs to stay the way it is. Thank you for your time.
Hey Esther, Miss Montgomery, Miss Montgomery, you can unmute yourself.
Did you call for Betty Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I own two properties, one at one six five three one and one six six oh six Nassau One, one is strictly personal, and the other I do rent, one is not, my family and friends there. I do manage this property myself, and we do plan on retiring one day to Jamaica Beach, that is our goal. I have not had one renter be loud at all. I worked hard to rent to just stay a little, and I do reject those that appear to be party people, and before they arrive, I do give them the rules to follow, and they agree to them before coming. Please do not cut us off at the meet. Again, my renters are normally two families come together for relaxing time. They are the mom and the dad with two kids, that's four on one side, and the other family is four, that is eight. You're making it where one family cannot bring their kids. Please do not hinder the concept of these to rent to families. With this ordinance, you are prohibiting the family, but you will give in turn on the party floor for showing. This ordinance will not correct their own issues, you are wanting to correct the last parties, the parking issues, not deserving the quiet hours, you already have ordinance for these. All you need to do is enforce those current ordinances to make this happen. This ordinance isn't going to correct any more than what you already have in place. And these rules can be placed on the back of our doors, they can be enforced before they even accept the rent, that they cannot do parties, they cannot have clients be allowed at a quiet time. They have to park in the same, you already noted, they renters should applaud you and confine that there you know these rules, and if they're wrong, they can see the ticket, that is how you can patch this issue. It's not the two plus two. Again, you're, you're making it where two families can't come, and this is not just the S T R throwing parties. I'm sorry, but I have a neighbor, full-time racist, and they throw parties all the time, and they are loud. You're not, it's not just the S T Rs that's the issue. Yes, we do have S T Rs that are bad, I agree, and those are probably the ones that's not even registered with the city, so you are only pushing the good S T Rs. And the ostrich in the city can come into our property as a growth of a regional government. And again, there's not. Bye.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Harris?
My favorite thing to do is public speak, so. My name is Robin Harris, I have a house at one six five two nine Anchor Way, I had that house for twelve years now, and we rented it here in that time, and my family now owns three other properties in the neighborhood as well as we rent. We rent them all at two plus four, we didn't do it on purpose, we just furnished them in a way that made sense for our family, and then when this came out, I started looking. During that time, we maintained good relationships with our neighbors over the part here. I can think of maybe six incidents in twelve years where we've been called and were stopped to, you know, the issue. I wanted to bring some photos, these are what one of my houses looks like. So it's a king bed and a big king bedroom, another king bed and a big king bedroom, a twin over full bunk bed with a trundle, and a sleeper sofa. It's a large three-bedroom house that sleeps ten. This picture was pulled from one of the problem, I'm not going to name names, houses that we know, and it sleeps as many in that bedroom, it looks like a concentration camp, as, as my whole house does. And these are the problems, and it bothers me too, I agree with everything you say. When you're talking about raising your kids here, I can put myself in that situation, I would hate it too, but the ordinance that you put in place two weeks ago immediately disqualified thirty-seven percent of our bookings, which are in the nine or ten people range. And we're breaking even, if we're lucky. Thirty-seven percent goes away, we're not breaking even, we're upside in having to figure out how to get rid of the property. Some people are probably thinking, well, good, but we're, but we're a few hundred people who consider ourselves members of the community as well. You know, we're invested, I know a lot of y'all are friends, and we're not part of the problem. I think a compromise, I know we don't usually see or much, but I think a compromise that we've mentioned was grandfathering these current owners in at a four plus, a two plus four, gives them the opportunity to maintain their properties, because remember, we purchased these properties with the understanding that that's about the limit we were going to be able to do. And then new owners will be in a two plus two, it'll achieve everything you need, these guys are operating at a ten plus twenty, you know, and you're still going to get some attrition over time as properties sell, people are not going to be as attracted to come in because of two plus two is not attractive. Over time, you're going to get that contraction that I think we all want, but it's not going to create this immediate hardship on people who, you know, this is our retirement plan, it's been in the works for twelve years, and watching on my computer two weeks ago, I'm seeing it vaporize, it's a scary thing for us, and there's a couple hundred people that are all involved, so thank you.
Can you patch in, Ms. Amy Whitlow?
Yes. Ms. Whitlow, you can unmute yourself. Ms. Whitlow?
Maybe you say the first name as well.
Amy?
Ask her one more time, maybe a little louder, Esther.
Ms. Whitlow, you can unmute yourself? She's unmuted. Can you hear us?
Is your phone on mute?
Hello?
There.
Yes, my phone was on mute, I'm sorry. I was like, ah, I don't know what's happening, okay. Um, sorry. My name is Amy Whitlow, I live at one six six Euro seven Nassau One Way. I can tell you that I have personally lived full-time in Jamaica Beach, my children have gone to school at Oppe Elementary, so we have been full-timers before, and since moving to Katie, we decided to enter our house up as an S T R. I am calling in to talk about the S T R ordinances. I will tell you also, my brother owns a house of nine years, and he's been an S T R for five years. My parents lived full-time in Jamaica Beach, and they lived there for roughly twelve years. I will let you know that on my street, there's about seven rentals I can count off the top of my head, since we do use our property, also because we like to go to Jamaica Beach, we don't always let it out. I've never once seen the police on my street, I have never once seen any cars in the street either, unless it's the people mowing, mowing the lawn. We don't have a problem, I've never seen citations, I've never had to call any of my neighbors, I can tell you, our three years, I've never had any call with citations police, nor any neighbors, and all of them have my phone number, have never called me about any complaints at my house. I know that I personally am not affected by the occupancy at all, whether it's the original one or plus four, none of them affect me, I sleep sick and I'm not where I'm supposed to be. So even though it doesn't affect me, I do want to say that I know in the city of Austin, in two thousand and sixteen, the S T Rs did file a lawsuit against the city of Austin, and it was found unconstitutional to limit those S T Rs' ability to set their occupancy at a property, because it violated their constitutional rights for freedom of assembly, association, and privacy. I also know that a letter was sent to Jamaica Beach on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three by the Mahindra litigation group, and there was another one sent by a different lawyer in two thousand and twenty, and now ordinances about the same exact issue. The reason these were not upheld because there was no research, they didn't provide police reports or citations of the city having alleged negative effects of the S T Rs on the local community. So with that being said, I feel like we have taken action and the S T Rs with litigation, I know they're not scared to, like I said, it actually doesn't affect me at all, but if, we could at least have research, police report citations, and if it is just those negative houses, I know there are some, like why are we not enforcing those rules? I already know the trash ordinance, I mean, that's not being enforced either by locals, I will say, that live there full-time, and we don't need rules in place, we need enforcement of the current laws that we already have. So I'm not for any occupancy limit, because responsible S T Rs know that you don't want your house fast. We sleep what's comfortable in our home. I could sleep eight, I could probably sleep nine because I have a king bed, but it will limit that ability to sleep.
Ms. Whitlow, you've reached your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Ms. Chidavivee Kelly.
Hello, this is Chidavivee Kelly, I'm at one six seven one two Jamaica Beach Road. Thank you for your service, I understand how that is. My family and I are military family, my husband, we first came to Jamaica Beach after one of his deployments to Afghanistan, and this was his place for respite, to, you know, reconstitute after being at war. We fell in love with Jamaica Beach and decided, after several trips, after many deployments, we wanted to buy a home here and make it a place where we would come to have family gatherings, get together, and possibly retire eventually. We had all of those intentions, and we do have elder family who live in San Antonio, which is where we now are, taking care of mom, dads, and that's very hard. So we are short-term renters now. We are short-term renters now because we need to have that house occupied. We served our military proudly, we served our country, but we did not serve to get rich, we served to do it because it was the right thing to do. And so in order for us to afford this home, our home is not occupied fifty percent of the time, but it is the other fifty percent, which is the high season time. Our home only occupies ten. I'm okay with what you have, I applaud your work on what you've done with that, and Brandon, I appreciate you wanting to raise a family here. Mark, I thank you for standing up for our short-term renters who are following your rules, who do believe in following your ordinances, but like many have said, the ordinances are there, we just need enforcement of them. I have had two evictions happen in my property, because people choose not to follow my rules that we have posted in our home, on our website, and in a book. We want to be a part of this community, we want to be rule followers, we want to bring business and make Jamaica Beach prosperous, but we don't want to be isolated. And so I would just say that short-term rentals are not all creative people, owners are not all creative people, and so if we could just have a little more consideration, that would be appreciative. The other things is, just something for new business, if I could just get it on record, something to think about, and I'm not sure what the rules are on that, but our beaches are crowded, one of the reasons that we wanted to buy Jamaica Beach was at the time it wasn't very crowded, now it is. And there are a lot of rules that aren't being followed on our beaches, there's a lot of littering that's happening on our beaches. I try to walk it whenever we are here and pick up trash when I can, and do what we can to keep our city beautiful. But is there a way that we could identify Jamaica Beach owners, like Outer Banks says with the O B X sticker, and put the J B O sticker, sticker maybe on our vehicles, and even on our homes, so that we're not having to maybe pay to enter our beach, but then charging other vehicles that are coming from way out onto our beach, you know?
Three minutes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Esther, Chidavivee, Cindy Young, Ms. Young, you may unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Cindy Young, I have a house at forty-two sixteen Spanish Main. We do not rent our house, but I am here in reference to the ordinance that was passed against S T Rs, and quite frankly, I'm disappointed that this board chose to pass an ordinance that they knew was not very easy to pass. I do not rent my house, but this does affect me, because we are going to end up paying more taxes if you get rid of S T Rs. I want to be able to have that option to rent my house if ever I come a hard time, and I need to do it. Honest days value if it violates protection constitution equal protection five by treating residential users different without the justification, and knowing that the challenges that we are going to get for this ordinance will cost the city undue litigation costs. What's that money coming from? We already have ordinance for the place to deal with many of these problem houses, and we need to enforce those ordinances. It's not creating new ones, limiting how many people you can have in your home, that's not going to do anything. The people that are violating the ordinance, they're going to do, they're going to do it anyway, they don't care, let's enforce the rules. Other rules won't make new ones. We need to allow our police to get to do their job and enforce everything that we already have in place, not this new S T R ordinance. It punishes the majority for the few. Now, I have a couple of issues with the ordinance itself. The sign on the back of the door, what if you have a glass door, what do you, what do with that? The sign is outside. Who would sit at their phone number on the front of their house? But the city already has that information, it's going to lead to harassment and unwanted phone calls. It's advertised to thieves, but this property is probably vacant. It's advertised to thieves, but this property is probably vacant. And it, doesn't it contradict other ordinances that are already in place that about advertising on homes for rent? I'm pretty sure it does. The fourth one, inspections, I want everybody to think about that. If you want somebody to come in your home, whether you're renting or not, I would think so. The occupancy limit. Two, two plus four, I think that's fair. But I think we have to consider the fact that some families are larger than others. This ordinance doesn't take into account small children and babies that don't sleep in bed. My, my family is very large. We come together. Are we no longer going to still do that?
Ms. Andrew, you bridge your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is Mr. Tom, apologize if I pronounce it wrong, Proden? Is it Proden?
Um, Tom Proden, uh, 16717 Kingston Lane. Um, relatively new to the community. Uh, we've owned our house here for about eight months. And, uh, yeah, I'm also here to talk about short-term rental, which we, we do as well. Um, I did listen to the last meeting, wasn't able to call in, the phone lines weren't working. Um, but I kind of felt like I was publicly new, number one, just because I'm a short-term rental in Jamaica Beach. And that's really unfortunate. We're new, we're just kind of meeting people. We do rent our house. We'd like to spend as much time as we can there. Um, we, uh, maintain the yard, um, we're down there once a week checking it out. We don't rent it to just anybody. We rent it to a lot of families getting together. Um, we, I think we have stricter regulations than anybody that rents it out from other organizations or companies. Um, we do have, um, bunks as well in our, in our place. We can't sleep more than the proposed two and two, or two and four. Uh, we don't have pull-out beds. We don't have apartments underneath our house or in our garage, which I think a lot of people are concerned about, the one getting taxes from places of work, advertising, the proper floor plan that was raised. Um, we do, we just registered our house. We're registered with Jamaica Beach. They have our phone number. Big thing. We don't want our phone number on advertised, just as I just mentioned. Um, people can do a lot with the phone number. Um, you know, it also makes it a target, uh, going forward. Who wants, I think we just read that there was somebody running around the community a couple days ago who was posted anyways. I mean, are they going to go for a house that they think nobody's in, or are they going to go for a house that's advertised as a rental? You know, it's a target. Uh, we definitely don't want that. Uh, we do ours at Jamaica Beach with, like, maximum occupancy, occupancy limits. Um, but we did buy our house here just because it has a reputation for a small and big community with active police presence. I agree with everybody's comments with letting the police do their job. There's, ordinance is already set in place. Um, if we have people, which we have not had any problem, we've never had to complain, and then have anybody throwing up our property, we monitor it very closely. By all means, if somebody's breaking those rules, I would love to have the police come in and throw them out or contact us. But we don't need to post our number on the side of our house. Um, but I think there should be exceptions. If you can prove that you have an adequate floor plan to sleep more people even than the proposed two and two, or two and four, why not? I mean, they're not hurting anybody, not hurting the community. Um, a lot of people from our place have expressed how much they've enjoyed going, walking down the street, buying pizzas, going, using the local businesses. Know they generate a lot. Good time.
Yes, you're next up. Uh, Suzie Knapp, you can unmute yourself. Ms. Knapp?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, my name is Suzie Knapp. Um, I have a house at 4212 Spanish Main, um, that do rent as an STR. And, um, I have, um, some concerns about the STR ordinance that, um, which is passed. Um, we are very strict on our, on our house. We specify the number of guests, we also specify no party. But this number, this two plus two, um, it, it, if, if people have children, small children, they kind of, um, overstep on, on what we allow. Um, so I have a problem with that. I also have a problem with having my phone number on a sign outside, and my name outside of my house. This is, uh, a security issue. Um, it's kind of like advertising that this house is empty at, at some times. And it's, um, it's just like telling people, hey, you can come in and pick up this house empty. So aside from the fact that, uh, a lot of people will do, will see my number and will get unwanted phone calls. Um, also, I have a problem with the inspection. Um, there, I, I wouldn't want an inspector to come to my house when I have renters there, and, and sometimes you have renter every day of the month. So it, it, this, this STR ordinance is, um, it, I feel like it's overstepping on a lot of these, a lot of, um, STR owners that are not, that are complying with everything, all the ordinances that are already in place and that should be enforced. I understand that there's a lot of people that do have parties and, um, and those are the ones that we should go against. I am totally against having a party at my house, and I have given my phone number to all my neighbors. They all have my number. They're, they know they're welcome to call me if they ever see anything. And I'll be glad to give my number to the police department if the city already has it. Um, if the, if the police department wants to have their own list, I'll be glad to give them my, my phone number. I just don't feel like this should be listed outside. Um, thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Knapp. Um, this, okay, we're through with the... What is Maggie Stone going to speak? Public comment here. So John Knapp next. What is Maggie Stone going to speak?
I, I didn't register. I didn't know we needed you to speak. I would still like to speak.
Were you still going to speak?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry, I thought, I thought. Thank you for clarifying.
Hi, I pretty much agree with that last two, three callers regarding STRs. And yeah, guys, it's a bit of an overreach constitutionally. And we don't have to do any files. Just read what you were sent. The last two, you're going to be spending a lot of money on legal attorney because it's unconstitutional what you do. So with that said, please read the notices you were sent.
Thank you. Thank you. Um...
May I speak?
Okay, we're good. Just saying. Is John Knapp on? Uh, John Knapp, you can unmute yourself.
Mr. Knapp?
Hello? Mr. Knapp? He's there, but he's... There. Hello, Mr. Knapp?
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Okay. Yes, uh, my name is John Knapp. I have a STR, um, 16542 East Bayside Way. Um, again, I'm calling about the sort of the, uh, STR ordinance. Uh, some of the complaints that I do have on that is the name and phone number on the outside of the house. Uh, I think that's probably a security risk that can purchase several times tonight and, uh, harassments. Um, one thing I do don't agree with is the occupancy. Um, I think the two plus two plus four would be fair. Uh, that would take care of the small children. Uh, we do have a signed contract on how many people can stay in the house. Uh, all my neighbors have our, have our phone number. Uh, we are registered, so the city has our phone number. Uh, now, again, we'll be glad to give it to the police department, uh, if there's ever a problem. Uh, if there is a problem, we have taken care of it. I, I agree that some of these houses are overdoing it on the occupancy, and, uh, those should be corrected. Um, as far as the inspection rule, uh, I don't think that we need to have an inspector come in and bother our renters. Uh, or we're going to do that with actual homeowners too. Uh, I'm sure they don't want inspectors coming into their house while they're, they're enjoying, enjoying their house. That's pretty much all I got to say is, uh, y'all need to take our complaints into consideration, and I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next is Ms. Andrea Spearing. Uh, she probably can't hear me. Did you?
No, I have it powered up, yeah.
Andrea Spearing, you can unmute yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, Andrea Spearing, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. I just, I have a couple things I want to say quickly. Uh, I think the ordinance that was passed at the last meeting, knowing it had errors, that perhaps passing it so quickly was perhaps, um, not in the best interest of Jamaica Beach. In fact, I brought up the issues of signage on glass doors prior to the ordinance being passed. And now we're looking at amending it to do just that, change the signage, um, remove inspections, um, remove, um, signage on the outside of the house where signs inside are posted, et cetera. I think these are all good amendments, but I think it would have been better in retrospect to have looked at these changes prior to passing the amendment. We passed an ordinance in 2021, ordinance 2021-6. This ordinance required registration of STRs. We have done that. Many of the people that have spoken tonight have done that. What we need to do is enforce this existing ordinance rather than keep burdening those of us that follow the rules and not go after the bad apples that don't follow the rules. Um, according to the Jamaica Beach website, we have a lot of non-registered STRs. I'm hoping the city has a plan for going after these unregistered STRs to allow them to fall into place with those of us that do follow the rules. Regarding the occupancy, how do we address the age of the guests? As other people have spoken about, um, a child under two is not the same as an 18-year-old. And allowing families with multiple children, I have four kids. Um, none of them have kids yet, but when they leave, we will all be staying at the house. My house sleeps 12, um, and we comfortably all sit there. Um, the house next door to me, again, own kind of company that will go unnamed, sleeps 22. There's a problem at STRs, not those of us that register. My next question is, how will STR registration fees be used? If we have a great number of STRs that the city has talked about and that citizens have talked about, this is going to be a lot of money. What are we going to do with these registration fees? Also, could council outline how much hot tax is collected annually over the last five years, and how the city has used those costs? We are at the maximum 9% hot for our small towns, which means except if Galveston only collects 7%. So if we didn't have as many STRs as we have now, how would the city handle financing and budgeting? Because I know the hot pays for the pool, it pays for some of the police, et cetera.
Ms. Spearing, you bridge your limit.
Okay, thank you so much for listening to us. Bye.
Okay, Ms. Hurd is next. Did you find Tracy? Tracy Hurd, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, um, this is Tracy Hurd. I have, um, an STR at 420A East Bayside, and I have been faithfully paying my taxes to the city. I keep a tidy home, um, yard as many STRs do. Uh, my home has not had any complaints, and I'm about to be penalized extremely hard because these new ordinances, uh, that were put into effect. Now my previous renters will not be eligible to stay in my home again, and, um, they will be disqualified because of too many people. Um, because of how my house is set up, there is a non-conventional room, that's a bunk room. Um, but it is a wonderful location for families. Typically, a renter would be grandparents and maybe two adult children. And then assuming each one of them has three children, we are at a large, uh, number that would not need the two plus two amount. Um, I'm afraid that with this new ordinance, the kind of people who don't want to come to Jamaica Beach won't be able to rent in Jamaica Beach because they have children. And therefore, my house will now rent to people who are not as family-oriented, and that's not really my target renter. Uh, again, I keep hearing year after year, there are just a few bad apples in the STR community, and I fear they're going to be the ones that not even adhere to these new rules. My concern is exactly how are these new ordinance is going to solve the problems of noise, parking, and trash? We need more solutions, not heavier rules. Um, changing how many people I can rent is not going to magically make renters understand anything about Jamaica Beach's noise, parking, or trash issues. Um, instead of this posted paper that's going to go up my front door, um, just basically saying my maximum occupancy, I would suggest that with this new annual fee that the STRs are going to have to pay, that each host would be provided with a poster and a paragraph. And the city would provide each STR, let's say, a laminated poster with the city rules, parking, noise ordinance, trash day, emergency numbers. Let the renters understand a little bit about our community. And if you really want improvement in rules, the ordinances, um, need to be expressed prior to renting. So again, with your annual fee, you would have a paragraph that's two sites that would be to help the STR owner put into their listing online to express what Jamaica Beach is all about. And this is how you vet a renter, not decreasing the headcount and posting a sign that says the house has the maximum occupancy. The first line of my home listing is always, this is not a party house. And I list out what is not allowed. No prom rooms, no weddings. And I get it, there's other houses out there to do it.
You bridge your limit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that counts.
There was one delay.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Normally, we do require you to come in.
I know, I read it, but I thought it was for people calling in.
Okay.
I drove in, I'm from that, so.
All right.
My name's Jerry Montgomery. Uh, I actually own two properties, both on Nassau Way. Uh, and, uh, you know, one I bought and, and we use just for our personal use. The second we bought for family and friends, and we do rent it as an STR. You know, I was looking on my street, and I counted all the houses. There's 35 houses up and down my street. Of those 35, 26 of them are actually weekenders like myself or STRs. Uh, that's 74%. So 74% of the people on my street are someone like me, weekenders. And, you know, I, I think the problems that we're trying to address here are the, the parks, right? The parking on the street, uh, the, the loud noises at the park and all that. We already have policies in place to address those. Just enforce them. I think, I think coming out with this ordinance, I think it's a, it's, it's not the right fix. It's, it's actually pointing the gun in the wrong direction. We just need to enforce what we already have. Uh, it's, it's... It's, you know, my property taxes have doubled in the last two years, right? I don't have a home state exemption, right? Most of these STRs, 74% of the people on my street, I would assume don't either. And you know what? I'm okay with that. I don't like paying taxes, but I'm okay that my property values are going up because that means people are investing in Jamaica Beach. I see construction going on, I see people putting money into it. I think this is gonna hinder that, and I'm real concerned about my investment, quite frankly. And I think this ordinance is gonna put that in jeopardy. You know, occupancy limits, drawings submitted, inspections, personal phone numbers, it's just bad. I think the one thing we can do is enforce whatever we have. And then secondly, charge for beach access, we're trying to, these people that are coming out here, they're coming here because it's cheap, right? They're coming here because it's free. Charge something, and let's make the beaches where we can enjoy them as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I speak, please?
Yes, come on up. Just briefly.
All right, very short.
If you state your name and address.
Sure, my name is George Campbell. I live at 16623 John Davis Road, and I've been, me and my wife have been here for three years. It's been a wonderful place, up until the last few years. And there were many, many deep restrictions, no businesses, no raising any vegetables that sell anywhere, no raising any farm animals, these are the names. All of a sudden, now I have a business next door, a business and people. I feel bad for all the folks who have bought into it. It may or may not work, but if you go to BRVO and you look at the map of Jamaica Beach, and you look at the houses that are favorable, we're almost at the tipping point where us as residents won't want to live here anymore. And I'm sad to say that, but I'm already thinking, and I'm sure there are many more of us. I live next door to a house that is 24 occupancy on BRVO, 32 on another one. After I, somebody came in and put concrete into all our downstairs bathrooms. I don't know why, I guess they didn't want any more. They put in, you'll see garage doors on their house, inside is a wall, they have bunk beds downstairs, we're not allowed to have a bedroom. They have a bathroom they built downstairs, we're not allowed to have a bathroom. I think there's many reasons why many vacation rental homes don't want you to go in and see what's going on. And that's all I have to say about Jamaica Beach. It's been a wonderful time. I'm getting old, and I don't know if it'll ever change again back to what it was, but thank you very much.
I don't have the last thing worn out there. We'll just distribute the signatures. Okay, thank you all who called in, thank you all who spoke. Next on the agenda is announcements. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody that Saturday, the number 2, is our annual city Christmas parade, party at the park from 3 to 5, and then the golf cart parade lines up at 5:15 and proceeds through the city, and then the boat parade will line up at the marina at 6:45. We do have awards this year for first place and runner-up, so please make plans to attend. I know Santa and Mrs. Claus are getting ready. Next, the reports are included. I don't know if Garvey is here, if he has anything to add. Robert, do you have anything to add outside of what's in your report? Okay, next.
I just wanted to say thank you, whoever came out to the poker run. That was an amazing event. I think it raised $1,000 for the Blue Santa program. The lady was so excited when she came to pick up a check.
Okay, next is consent agenda and approval of minutes. The minutes are attached. Do we, do I have a?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the minutes? Okay, Robert, should I? Okay, next are comments, reports for members of council. We should start different once in a while, but we'll start with you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I took a quick trip for early Thanksgiving with my family. I want to thank our police department for adding my home to their watch list while I was away. It's a company service that JCPD offers to everyone who requests it. So thank you, Chief, he already left. Last Saturday, I went to an amazing veterans event in Utah. Before and after the event, my sister and I were able to share almost 100 stars with veterans who attended the event. Also, last week, I was honored to attend the Galveston County Fire Department meeting held at our fire department hall. Thank you, Chief Baden, for including me, and thank you for making our fire department a great example for the county with the limited resources that they have. His leadership makes Jamaica Beach very proud. I was able to share stars with those who were, who also attended the fire department. My volunteers and I have now shared over 5,600 stars in the last two years. This is my new set of stars from my volunteers, which include Ginger and Jerry Jones, who dropped these off to me tonight. So if you know a hero and you want to share a star, please get with me. They're also there in the lobby at City Hall. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Alderman Dre?
I don't have any.
Okay. Alderman.
First thing, a big, huge thank you to Erin and Gina Rennick for their wonderful effort at the park, putting together a night out.
Yes.
And.
Okay, Alderman Rupertis?
Definitely, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Green?
I don't have anything this week. I didn't hear you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're moving on to new business. So first up on the agenda is a drought contingency plan, and.
First, I want to say before we go to the PowerPoint, we're not charging you any extra money, okay? This is just in case we ever get into drought conditions. If you go to the first slide, second slide.
Hang on, I'm trying to see where I went there. I want to know that it's gonna work out.
Okay, we had to put this together because the TCEQ asked us to have one every five years. And looking through all the back records we have, we haven't known this since 2002. And that's why it hit their radar. Actually, they don't even ask us to present it to them, they just want to have it just here where if they come in here and inspect us. But since it hadn't been since 2002, they make us send it out to them with a pass ordinance that we accepted this contingency plan. We did our five stages to our contingency plan, but they don't get started until the city of Galveston, who provides us with water, you just, just wait on me.
It's over there on the side.
Well, it doesn't get kicked in until the city of Galveston puts in, they'll kick off everything because they supply our water, and. I was prepared to give you my PowerPoint.
I will do.
Let me just get my. I have it on my desk. Let me just run that office real fast.
Now, Robert can pick up when he comes in, but basically, as you said, the drought contingency plan is a requirement from TCEQ. And when it was brought to our attention by TCEQ that, oh, we needed to produce one for them and we couldn't, the 2002 version needed to be updated. And this does follow basically the guidelines from Galveston. So what TCEQ, say, water conservation measure, requires cities to address low water conditions. So there are five stages from miles, which we experienced this summer. Those of you that remember, I posted out a request for people to attempt to conserve water, you know, to try to fill washing machines full, you know. Keep in mind, you know, the length of your showers. And it goes all the way up to water allocation. And yes, water allocation is severe, but we're talking about a condition where the main water line that comes across the causeway that supplies Galveston might go down. It could be, you know, either a prank or a terrorist pollutes the water supply as it comes across to Galveston, and we might have to completely purge the system. So water allocation really is extreme. So if you read through the different levels, it basically says, for the different levels, you get into different requirements. And just kind of flipping through, all of this is in the ordinance. Robert will post this PowerPoint presentation out, well, it'll be in the minutes, and also we'll post it probably on the water page. Little easier language to read here than in the actual ordinance.
Let me add, we had an average of 1.33 inches of rain all summer long, from May 1st to September 30th, and we never got past a mile. Okay, so when people say that, well, you're gonna find me, well, we never got past a mile this time, and this was probably, and this was recorded the hottest summer ever reported. So we don't anticipate this unless something catastrophic happens, and then we'll have to go into the measures of allocation. An average family or average person uses 60 gallons of water per day, so it fits into the allocation still, okay? Take shorter showers, if you're washing clothes, put a full load in, do some practical things if we ever reach that part.
And so basically, for each one of these triggers, you know, there's more and more water restrictions put in place. The first one is voluntary, the second one, and I can't remember them all off the top of my head, but it basically says you have to limit the number of days you water, then you have to limit any outside washing of anything, driveway, a house, then it goes into tighter water restrictions on when you can water, then it goes in, you can only water with a bucket, and then we're on water allocation, where pools and anything else can't be filled, and each household has a designated amount of water.
Right.
And.
Depending on your address, odd and even days.
Yeah. And when you look at that amount of water, if we look at our average two-person resident, most of them fall kind of well under our 2,000 gallons, which is our minimum bill, and so the allocation is still only slightly less than what the majority of our residents are using. So unless you have a pool or excessive watering, you know, the two-person number, it's actually not that restrictive, even in a water emergency situation. So anyway, did we have any discussion from the audience about the drought contingency plan? Any questions or other comments? No? Do I have a motion to discuss that with council?
I make a motion to discuss this.
Do I have a second? No second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I don't have any to put myself, I think it's, I think it's.
I don't have any.
But I do feel any of the other council members have any?
I don't think we have much choice.
I don't think we have any choice, to be honest. Galveston is gonna put the restrictions on us whether we want them or not, so there we are.
That's it, that's where we really are.
Yeah.
But still, we said it.
Does anybody have any amendments or issues with it?
No, it just seems to be paperwork, sort of thing, required by our environmental quality commission.
Yes, it is, but in the event that we do get into a drought situation, then having an ordinance in place that helps equalize everything, you know, it is nice to have those measures in place in the event of. Any other discussion from council? Okay, it is up for vote if we choose to vote on it. Do I have a motion to vote?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
The ordinance 202312, adopting the drought contingency plan, requiring compliance, the same in setting up possible penalty for non-compliance.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of ordinance? Okay. All right. All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is, on the STR ordinance, due to the lack of call-in availability at the last meeting, we learned that our call-in was limited, and it rolls. So somebody was trying to call in, it bumped the first person off, then the next one called in, the second person got bumped off. So I apologize that that night, we just had a revolving door. You get in, you get bumped off. We did discover that that was a shortcoming on how many lines we had actually signed up for, and so we've gone to this new system, we'll see how it works for a while, and see if it continues to allow people the right to call in, and as well as with teens, we have a little bit better control over it as well. But comments we got after that meeting, we did recognize that on the back of the front door, while that's what hotels recommend, it doesn't work very well for glass doors in Jamaica Beach. So do I have a motion to discuss an amendment to the STR ordinance to change the wording from back of the front door to in a location visible to all guests?
I'll make that motion to discuss the requirements about the door.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so discussion?
Point one, and it was brought up to me several times, and it's a very valid point, is the posting of the operator's name and phone number.
That's what I.
That's the next one.
That's what I.
Oh, rats. I thought I was gonna have a good time. This is the posting, the registration, right?
Yes, no, this one is just the location of posting the registration certificate. So the city, when you turn in your application. So, the city, when you turn in your application, um, the current res- registration or older, the city is gonna produce a registration certificate for you. And that registration certificate, uh, the intent right now is to have a laminated sheet. It's got a QR code that takes you to a site on the STR page where there's a summary of all the ordinances that apply. It also has, has some other critical information on it. So, um, there's, Mayor, I'll make my... May I just clarify? This is, forgive me, um, but there already is on the website, um, a, a visitor's page. And it helps clarify a lot of information that, um, owners should, should have access to. So, I encourage all of you to go to that visitor's page because the rules apply to everyone. Yeah, thank you. Um, so, this is simply taking the requirement of posting that registration certificate on the back of the front door. Since many of our front doors are glass and, uh, and changing it to, uh, you know, they're still required to post it, but in a visible location. Refrigerator next to the front door, uh, someplace where the owner feels it will be seen. And it's, it's gonna be in a hit by eleven, it's, it's not a massively intrusive amendment. What other discussion? None? Okay.
I'll make the motion and adopt this.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do, do I have a vote to approve the amendment from ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen and ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amended ordinance twenty twenty-three, eleven, to change the wording on page five, section, short-term rental operational requirements, paragraph A, from on the back of the front door to in a location visible to all guests? All in favor of that amendment? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, here you go. Uh, do I have a motion to discuss amending the STR ordinance to remove the requirement of posting this registration number, uh, with contact information on it? Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion, but that's not how it reads.
To eliminate paragraph D at the top of page six that reads, "The owner shall post the following outside the house: street number on the house and a sign that contains the short-term rental registration number and to the local twenty-four-hour contact telephone number. The posting requires a man of two-inch fluttering visible from the public street for emergency and police responders."
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
So, again, coming back off the numbers, I, I got, I got a lot of, uh, feedback on, on this one about the privacy concerns and, and, you know, I agree, I, I own a couple of properties in Jamaica Beach and I get call, unwanted calls about my properties all the time. I can imagine if you had a phone number up there, it would just exponentially increase those unwanted calls. Plus, a clever person could backtrack from that phone number and, 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 uh, gain some access to people's, uh, personal identifiable and in, information from, I think. I, I, I'm fine with the address and the registration, but I, I think the phone number is, is a, a privacy issue and I think we, we need respect the privacy of those homeowners.
And, um, the feedback we received is also just the registration being very general, sorry, I do have a cold guess. Uh... I'll hear it. Anyway, the, having the registration number posted also could be a security concern uh, for the short-term rentals because it does let you know that it is a short-term rental. Any other discussion on this proposed amendment?
Yeah, I do. So, this is all around, just pulling the whole paragraph out. Now, doesn't it prohibit the city, the citizens, the, the STR properties that have a registration number? Doesn't that make life better? Notifying properties, verifying properties. Say we have a property, issue with a property, we get an address. They have to call, what, the police department, the police department have to look up by address. Don't we have a registration book? I'm just...
Yes, so the final...
In the grand scheme of things.
Yes, when we looked at this and we looked at the concerns, the, the original thought was, yes, it needs to be there. The registration number, easy access to who we need to contact if there's an issue. So, as we talked to my staff about how this issue could be addressed, the information will be updated with the new required application. Uh, a lot of our information is very out of date. Uh, the, the owners have just not been updating the information, getting it to the city as required. So, that will give us the information. Then, the intent is, on a monthly basis, just, uh, produce a booklet that shows the registration number, the address, the registration number, and then it will have the contact information and, uh, the police will have that in their vehicle. And that would be available with a public information request? Yes, it would, as well. I mean, it is public information, uh, as, as far as the application part. So, that was the plan, Russell, is to be able to, to, to just print off manually so that our police force would have access to that information.
I just, I see a benefit of having the registration number. And I understand and I heard from the, the owners that it identifies their home as a rental property. But when I drive down the street, I see signage left and right identifying their properties. I'm just trying to take it all sides.
I think if owners want to, um, advertise their property within our sign limits, that, I think J D I C is over that. But, um, I have no problem if they want to, to put up a sign or put up the, the, they have a name and a phone number and I think it's a great suggestion. I before driven by a house and thought, that'd be a great place to rent and I, and I've gone ahead and rented it. So, um, you know, but I think it's good to offer it as a suggestion, but not a requirement.
I was discussing the registration on the other plate, anyway.
Um, well, is there a, okay, so, we need a motion to approve the amendment as stated, which is removing the paragraph? Or we need a motion to amend it to say that the registration number will be required on a visible location from the street? Take away the contact information, uh, so...
Make the motion to remove the whole, the whole part.
The whole paragraph? Okay. Second that? Okay, all right, uh, so, we have a motion to, um, approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen and ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, and then the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, uh, the rest of item three, to eliminate paragraph D. That reads, uh, "The owner shall post the following outside the house: street number on the house..." I should also point out, we do have another ordinance that requires every house to have a street number on it for nine-one-one purposes. Okay, so, uh, this does not give STR owners the right to not post their address. That's, that's required separately. Uh, "Street number on the house and a sign that contains the short-term rental registration number and the local twenty-four-hour contact telephone number." Remove the rest of the paragraph. Do I have a second on that? Oh, no, we're voting to approve it. Voting to approve removing the paragraph.
Uh, do you need it, ma'am?
All right, next is discussion consideration and possibly take action to approve removing the requirement for an onsite inspection. Uh, do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that a motion, to discuss.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, here again, we got a lot of, uh, feedback with concerns about people going into the homes. Um, and the requirement was based on the fact that if your application doesn't seem to match what that house could realistically hold, the city with ten days' notice could come in and inspect for accuracy of the application information. But, but many people felt like that was, uh, an infringement. So, the, uh, the potential amendment to remove that requirement has been put forth. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a discussion. This is a safety issue, right? This is to see if the property is, because it is no longer a residence at this point, it is a business. I think there's, there's clearly, there's no reliance between your residence and your business. Right?
So, the, the way it's written is the city didn't want just carte blanche ability to say, "We're gonna blanket come in and inspect." We felt that that was an overreach, even for business.
It is.
And, uh, so, what the ordinance currently says is if there is questions about the accuracy of the rental application information. So, if they come in and they say that they've got eight bedrooms in a thousand-square-foot location, that, that would be a reason for concern where the city might wanna go in and verify just how they're getting that many bedrooms in and, uh, you know, hey, we need to fix the application. However, if there's, if occupants have been at the short-term rental and complained about the safety of the house, then the city would also have the right to go in and inspect compared against the application information, which was the basis for issuing the registration number. So, um...
So, it seems, it seems like there's a, a catch-22 here. And I, I understand about property rights and, and all of that. And I'm not trying to, you know, say, you know, the city's gonna come in and kick your door down. I, I think ten days isn't near long enough notice for first one because if I'm on vac, if we get a complaint from a guest and I'm on vacation, there's no way that I would let somebody from the city into my place without me watching them, I would step away. Right, so, I think ten days is, is not enough notice. And given that our choice here is to strike or not, I, I think, you know, I, I don't like it as written. It's just, it's...
Okay.
It doesn't give the homeowner enough time to react or remedy prior to inspection.
Okay, so you're proposing keeping the requirement in, but...
No, I, I, no, I don't wanna change the language of this because you shouldn't be changing the language of, of items that you submit. But I, I think ten days is not enough. I think we should strike it completely until we come up with more suitable language.
Okay, well, the, the proposed ordinance right now is to strike it.
Is to strike it, yeah.
All right.
No, go ahead.
No, please.
Go ahead, Gil.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor that we go ahead and, and eliminate item fourteen and its entirety. But I do think we need to relook at this because, just sit this thing and, and look at another way to rephrase it. One of the things is the fire inspection that was brought up. I think it's vital that these rental properties be inspected for smoke alarms and things of this nature once a year for the protection of the people that's gonna be in there. Things like that, I think we just need to look at this. I think something like this is necessary, but I just think this just needs to be extinguished and we look at, look at what we really wanna do here.
For future. All right.
I'm not happy with the wording for the, the statement of it. You mentioned something just earlier on this topic about if an issue comes up, that then the city is to contact. So, this isn't a blanket-all policy. This is only in a, if an issue arises that we will contact for an inspection? I don't see what that's written.
Um, it says if an onsite inspection of the short-term rental to determine accuracy of the short-term rental application information. You know, so, that does give us the blanket right to go in at any point and say, "I need to confirm." But, I mean, but, but under what criteria are you gonna say it's questionable? We couldn't spell out absolutely every instance where an application might be questionable in its accuracy.
Well, isn't that what we're trying to do? We're trying to get the house and the website to be accurate and in compliance. So, if we find, if Granicus finds that this house is saying they can sleep twenty-two and it comes to our attention, well, then that should grant us the right to contact the homeowner and inspect. Not just because we feel like it, I mean, something needs to bring this to our attention for us to question.
Yes, I agree. So, the, as the ordinance is written, uh, the city will grant a registration number based on the application, right? And, and say that the occupancy per the application, be it two plus two, two plus four, whatever the, the city ultimately decides. So, say your occupancy is eight. While if Granicus tells us that, that Airbnb and VRBO are advertising this house at twenty-two, that's a citation. Uh, we don't need to go inspect their house. Their registration certificate is for the agreed-upon permitted occupancy and they're advertising more than that. So, that's a citation. If they come with an application and it's questionable, right? I mean, if you come in and you say you have a twelve-hundred-square-foot house and you have four bedrooms and your sketch shows how those four bedrooms are laid out, you're gonna say, "All right, kinda small, but, uh, makes sense." But if they come in and they tell me there's six or seven bedrooms in that space and the sketch shows that, don't know how there's enough windows, can't imagine enough heat dress, then that's the condition that the city would be able to go in and say, "I need to see how you've got these bedrooms made out." And, and confirm that they truly do have that many bedrooms. And then the other instance is in the event that an occupant called and said, uh, whatever. You know, "My window was locked and I couldn't, couldn't get out if I needed to," you know, "Jam wouldn't open." It could be any number of safety issues that they brought forward. And, and the city would attempt to resolve it with the owner, but if we needed to go in and inspect, then this gives us that right. That was the purpose. But, but I do understand STR owners having, you know, concerns about the, the city's right to enter their home. That's why we're discussing it.
So, this one is, is to strike that...
Strike that, strike that requirement completely.
And we're not wanting to help.
That's...
That's what we wanted. Make that motion.
Mayor, wait, I think we had a little more, sorry, I guess if you made a motion, we have to...
And, um, I also, um, we overlooked a little Fourth Amendment right with the right to privacy. So, I liked, I, I, I would hope that most owners would be honest and forthright with us. Of course, there's always gonna be a few bad apples. But, uh, we need to, um, um, follow their, their constitutional rights. And, uh, you know, hopefully, maybe if there was a question, hopefully the city would be invited in and then we can clear up any misunderstandings.
Good, you can second that, I'm not, no, you're not.
Robert, you raised your hand a couple of times, did you have...
I was just kidding, I mean, you, so, if it's up the owner's system of the house that's sleeping twenty-two and they tell you, "Well, yeah, we have ten bedrooms in here," and then you don't have the option to go check it out, you're at an impasse and the ordinance has done nothing, right?
Um, no, actually, we can do things because falsifying the application is, is... Well, you know what, you can go outside and you can look at a sketch and you can look at where windows are and...
I thought, I thought one option might be if there's a discrepancy and, and I say, "I can sleep twelve in my property because of the bedrooms," and you say, "Yeah, but according to G-CAD or Granicus, whatever, you should only be able to sleep eight." And I say, "Yeah, but I have four bedrooms," and then you say, "Oh, well." And then I, I could request the inspection to verify. That way, it's not giving a, authority to the city to impose an inspection on me. But if I want to, if I want to propose that my limit is more than what you're saying, then I can request an inspection to verify it, that puts the...
But I think that's implied within the, uh, I mean, you provide your sketch, right?
Yeah.
And based on that sketch, the city issues an occupancy based on your stated number of bedrooms. Um, if the city has questions about their stated number of bedrooms and exterior inspection furthers that question, then this ordinance actually gives the city... furthers that question, then this ordinance actually gives the city the right to issue a citation and then the owner can come forward and say, no, this is, let me prove to you that this isn't the case.
It makes it sound like the city has the authority to just, hey, we're doing an inspection within ten days.
The way, the way it's written, the, the city does.
I'm just wondering if it might be less invasive and more valuable for owners if it's set, if there's a discrepancy, the city's information is what's going, what, what we're gonna go with. And if you're saying that's incorrect, then you can request that inspection to prove you haven't worked.
And, and they can do that at any time. When we come, when we step forward and say, here's your occupancy based on, but it's gonna be based on your sketch, but if we question your sketch and we say, no, we feel exterior looking, we've got this many bedrooms, 'cause that's how many windows I count.
Right.
And this is the way I would sketch it up and we're gonna do this occupancy. And then, yes, you would invite us in to prove differently.
We have to, within ten days, if not, we could request it.
No, you could request it at any time to clarify the occupancy.
Yeah.
Ralph, actually.
We could just be fair.
Right.
Ralph, you had a comment?
Ralph McDermott, one-six-seven, one-five, stamp, I think as it's written, the only change needs to be made, according to David, is that instead of ten days, we give them fifteen or thirty days written notice. That doesn't give the city carte blanche to go in and disrupt families or rentals. It gives the city a thirty-day notice to say, we need to inspect your house. When, when would be convenient for you? I, I think as written, with a change of thirty days would be fine.
Sharon?
Yes, Mr.?
I agree a hundred percent with that. Because, because I have, I've sat here, I've, I've read it like five times, okay, to make sure I really understand it. And three things. Number one, you, the owner has to approve you going into the house, right? And you can only go into the house for two reasons. Number one, to confirm that the application is correct. And number two, if there's a problem, a safety hazard. That's the only two reasons you can go into somebody's house. Now, the ten days, the ten days is, is too short of a time. If you were to change it to thirty days, then everything would be okay. You're not gonna go into a house without the owner's permission. You can't, right? So.
Right.
It's, it's perfectly written. I think it's perfectly written.
I, I agree with your, with your presentation, but I also, one of the reasons I'd like to sit, and we're gonna have further discussion on a lot of this. When we voted to pass this, we knew, I fully expected this discussion to continue and this STR to be amended. We need to do this anyway. The reason that the original STR ordinance was not effective is 'cause we didn't have this discussion, okay? We didn't reach consensus as a community. Therefore, it wasn't consistently enforced. I don't wanna come back here, okay, I don't wanna come back to this table, okay, unless we continue to have the discussions and work this stuff out, we will have an excellent STR and we very well did it. But I would like to see us put the same verbiage that you just said and plain everyday language, okay, and also run in the power code. That's all I'm saying. That's the reason for revising.
So if we, Mayor, if we, I, I'm not comfortable still with the wording because of, if we can write, write something about that when, when they get, when they, when a person does a registration and if there is questions, then I, I'm not, I'm not even comfortable finishing my, I'm gonna read this. The Fourth Amendment, and it's just a quick summation of the Fourth Amendment. The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrant shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation in particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Now, we all try to be honorable in serving and our employers, employees to be honorable, but there could be one person that comes into the mix that may not be honorable. And so that's the one person I'm concerned about. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with, with this onsite inspection. I, I would just hope that people would, if there's a, if, if I find a way to remind people that they can invite us into fourth, if there's a question. But we need to, but we can, if we have a question, we can just deny them a registration and tell that cleared out.
Are they true differently? Yes, that's true. Okay, so I believe there's three options and we'll see what we motion on. One is as written to eliminate completely. Number two is to modify it so that instead of saying to eliminate item fourteen, it, it gets modified to thirty days. The other option is we can motion to table this, tweak it, and bring it to the next council meeting.
I'm big for it.
As a fourth, we can just approve it and change it later.
So do I, do I have a motion to table this?
I'd like that motion to table this one for tonight.
Do I have a second?
All seconded out.
Okay. All in favor of tabling this motion till, to discuss till next time?
I abstain. Four-one, pass this to table.
Okay.
I knew we were on the same side of that.
We're there. It's the same thing. We're gonna have to bring it back and give it to.
Okay, the, the, the fifth item on the new business agenda is discussion only on the same ordinance and, and it's considering a two-plus-four instead of a two-plus-two. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I might have a motion.
Second. Second. We've heard a lot of comments. I, I did, I did put this one for discussion only, so I don't know if any other clarification is needed. What, what is, you know, sort of council's?
I would like to draw a line between adults and children. I'm not fine with plus-two, bedrooms plus-two adults, but we, we've heard from a lot of families and if you have, and like they said, if you had two parents with three kids each, one family can't come. And I don't think that was our intent, or at least I hope that wasn't our intent. I would, I would like to see, you know, I know we're not gonna pass anything, but I'd like to see this amended to two-plus-two adults. And then we'd have to, we'd have to have some sort of verbiage defining what adult means in this, this instance, right? Anyway, that's, that's my thought on it.
I, I agree with you. I think that if we could do two-plus-two and like kids under twelve, that's reasonable. Any, most kids are gonna, under twelve are gonna be littler than me, so.
But you're sending yourself a sorry time of this.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, yeah, we opened this discussion, we roundtable it.
So the, the way the search sites work, not all of them distinguish between children and adults. Some of them do, but there are platforms that would not be able to.
Right.
Do that. And so you have a, then you're looking at what we would be advertising as far as our occupancy. It would be the total and you would never be able to, unless we provided you.
Or just a kit to kit.
Yeah, and it's just, 'cause I, 'cause I agree, I would much prefer to not have ten adults in my house, but I would try to look into that and it's hard to, hard to do that because of the way that people search and book these properties. It's just gonna be complicated back there, that's all.
The, yeah, the, the issue there, Dave, is there's, the platforms, the platforms don't allow that distinction.
You had that discussion earlier.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, 'cause if I was looking to rent, it was two families with two kids apiece, I would look for something with eight, you know, and that, that would throw out, you know, any of the two bedrooms homes.
Yes. If I was, but I may not, you know, 'cause I'm making our little kids, I would look at all. I'd look.
I'm just saying that's what our renters ask for when they call, hey, you know, this is what we got.
Okay, well, it's great, I mean, it's a separate discussion, we'll continue to talk about it offline and take comments and we'll have a proposal at one of the upcoming meetings as, as far as how to.
I would like to say one thing. I would like to address some of this. First, I'm really pleased that we're sitting here having a reasonable discussion and we're bringing this community together so that's what we wind up with for. I've, I've read all of your, all the emails that you sent and I'm sitting here listening to you. Intent never was always to be fair, but the intent is we must get control of this STR situation, is tore our community apart rightly or wrongly. We're not Kima, we're not Hitchcock, we're Jamaica Beach. Each one of these cities have their individuals, they have different problems, it's difficult to be compared to. So my concern is always gonna be Jamaica Beach. As far as this business with meandering litigation group, I read theirs too, I received it, I read it, and this, this, this type of a law firm in litigation is very popular, especially in big cities, they make a lot of money with it. I don't see anything in here. It, it's just another law firm's interpretation. Our law firm, Olson and Olson, has looked at what we proposed and said that is reasonable. Now, what I'm saying is that I'm glad we're gonna relook at it and there's got to be a way to resolve this where it's fair to the, to the STR owners as well as the people in the community. I, I just think it's there if we really work on it. I know that this law firm pointed out that, excuse me, this law firm pointed out that, and I'll read this, Stan Texas has already enacted occupancy limits for rentals and they, they cite, they cite a ruling setting a maximum occupancy for rental property of three adults per bedroom, okay? They said this, but we have to read the whole, you know, the, the whole ruling. I mean, they may have just variable cherry picks a few lines, and I think that's exactly what they've done. But be that which may, I made a, I made a quick, just a quick thing, it's saying we would consider two plus, plus two plus three instead of two plus two plus two, adding one person, something like that. Maybe more reasonable.
Well, I think, Tricia, I'm sorry, Mr. Alderman, Dave, you're not through.
Yeah.
I'm through.
So that, that's all I've got basically is that. That's my comment, that there's never any intent, the intent is to resolve the STR situation. And we're gonna continue working with this and we'll continue having more discussions. And we'll have discussions on the beach as well. And welcome here.
You had a comment in the.
Yes, I'm the talker Prodan, I'm at sixteen-seven-one-seven Houston Way. And I heard what you were saying earlier, Mayor, when you were talking about the sketch and fitting the occupancy based off the sketch. So we are like the new owners are, we have a brand-new build and it had custom bunk beds built in, so we kinda don't fall into those sidelines, but we have the big square footage and it's, it's beds, it's not based off two-plus-two. So it's, it's not like we're cramming it in, it's just kind of, that's the way they designed it. It's brand-new, it's got all the egress, it's got the smoke detectors. So it'd be great if there is something that we're, we could do an exception or something, like you do have this policy, but maybe there's the one that does have the exception with the home whiteboards that was, that's been built brand-new for that particular square footage and those beds. And that's all. And I do appreciate everybody who's up there today and all your time. But Tricia, you had a quick comment.
Yeah. I think it should definitely be two-plus-four. We all know that two more people is not gonna make a difference. Gil, you live on the same canal. We know that it's the ten, fif-, I mean, it's the fifteen, twenty people that are causing the problems, not the, not the family members that have six kids, two couples with six kids. They play in the canals all day, I would love to see that. I love to see all these kids. It's the twenty, thirty, forty people at these party houses, that's what's causing the problem, not the two-plus-four or even, even more, like, like if her house could handle it and it's built for that, it's, it's the people, it's the owners, it's the enforcement we do. It's not, we don't need to restrict people to eight, ten, whatever, if they're following the rules, we need to enforce what we have. And we need to stop these parties that are going on.
All right, one more comment, Brandon, and then we're gonna move on to the.
Just keep hearing everyone say that the extra two people doesn't affect anyone. They're saying it doesn't affect anyone that lives here, but I put it back with you. Losing two people shouldn't affect you in the same exact way. Yeah. It's just two people, it's just two people. But it does.
Yeah, two children.
So if you have more people in your house, then you can figure out.
Two kids.
Guys?
I don't wanna lose focus on what we're trying to achieve. Yet again, in the city, I'm seeing that a few bad apples are ruining it for everyone. These bad apples have been brought to our attention, we have that information, we have ordinances, laws, and everything in place. I don't understand why we're not focusing our attention right now, right here directly then. These downstairs shouldn't have been built out, we already have ordinances, we have one nailed against propagifying these homes. Let's get started where we can. Let's not get caught up on, on all the, we have the tools we need to go right now. Let's, let's start working on it.
Agreed.
Well, I think that concludes the discussion on this part of the ordinance and we will bring something forward at the next meeting that either says we're, the, the council will vote on what we want our occupancy to be. Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion only on our ordinance that creates the position of city administrator, which replaces ordinance ninety-nine dash seven. So back in ninety-nine, we had an ordinance creating the position of city administrator. In twenty-one, that ordinance was, was actually usurped with an ordinance putting in a co-, three co-administrators. As y'all are all aware, we've been out recruiting for a city administrator and as such, our ordinance needs to match what we're intending to do. So we put together an ordinance that defines the roles and responsibility of the city administrator and hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at it. Do I have a motion to discuss proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash seventeen?
We'll make a motion to discuss ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash seven, ordinance creating the position of city administrator and replacing the existing ordinance ninety-nine dash seven.
Hold on a second, yeah. Okay. This is just a, a chance for council to speak up and. Uh, this is just a, a chance for council to speak up and, and, uh, you know, any, any concerns, issues with the position responsibilities or titles? I know one thing that was brought to my attention is it states that the city administrator shall discharge all employees other than department heads and appointed city officers. And, uh. What page is that? That is second page, it's under section two employees, thank you. It's the second bullet point down. Um, one of the comments was that we should specify the two positions, which is city secretary, then chief of police, that the, uh, city administrator doesn't have hiring and firing over, uh, those all to the city council. Uh, unless we want to specifically give that right to.
I'm fine with the language as it is, what if?
Does he change or grow or?
What if some change comes along and we're required by the state to have exposition and, and unfunded? And I, I, you know, I'm not saying that the government gives mandates all the time. But an unfunded mandate creates some position that has to be, and, you know, we have to approve it by council. You're limited yourself.
No, no.
It's the ordinance itself.
No, this is just the ordinance itself. It's not really talking about.
I was hired by the city council, is that going to be?
No, because you're, the co administrators are.
So my, will no longer be a director?
You will no longer be a co administrator?
No, while you said there, the only two would be the city secretary and the city, uh.
That are appointed by city council, that's right. That's right.
What about the, it's vague, what about the police force? So the city administrator, the way this reads, hires and fires all of our police force?
No, she said those would be, the city secretary, chief of police, will be appointed by council. Uh, and then department heads have the right to discharge their personnel as required. Uh, so.
Can we clean that up before we move on?
Yeah, that's, and that's why it's up for discussion now. Uh, Mayor, could we also kind of have a, 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 a design, a page that shows us who's, who's under, you know?
Or chart.
A, a close up.
In the, on your.
Yeah, it's, it's actually in there for, it's one of his duties, is to design the org chart. And, uh, and then, you know, that would take council sort of concurrence for, for that org chart.
One thing that called my attention is what about emergency situations? You know, it reads all of his job duties and everything, but it doesn't state anything, God knows where we live, about emergency situations and storms.
Uh, as far as.
There's no emergency management guidelines, there's no request for him to stay, to hold down a fort. I didn't see anything for emergency circumstances, and we've had that before.
Okay, that's a good add.
And certainly, we added on to the city with all outside government, including the city and.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't, it's, it's a good point about the expectation that, that the city administrator, um, so we'll add a section. They'll, they'll need a rule, it'll sell it, so, basically, yes. Yes, okay.
And who is going to be appointed emergency manager, is that going to be?
Our current emergency management plan states it's the mayor.
Yep.
Is the, is the primary with the assistance of the, uh, department heads is required. But that is what our current emergency management plan states. If, uh, if we want to, uh, visit that and change it, we can bring it forward as an agenda item to change it. But currently, currently in the state of this may, was put in place recently.
And it's a while, right?
Not super recently, but, uh, that, that was updated by, by, uh, the previous police chief, that was a good add to Russell, thank you. Uh, okay, so this was our discussion. We will, um, take into account, looking at the wording on that one, adding an emergency section. And if you guys see anything else, uh, we'll, we'll add or modify, uh, and then it'll be up for vote at the next council meeting. All right? Uh, okay, next is discussion consideration and take action to approve resolution number twenty-two-three dash twelve, authorizing the mayor to approve the recommendation from John D. Mercer and Associates for Phase Five of the waterline replacement project. Um, do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make a motion if we have an ordinance that.
Okay.
For this.
Yes.
Madra.
Uh, resolution twenty-two-three dash travel, authorizing the mayor to approve the recommendation of John D. Mercer and Associates for Phase Five of the waterline replacement project.
Okay.
We got Brian Cramer in the audience from Cre- from Mercer.
Thanks for hanging out, Brian.
Thank you for hanging out, Brian.
Along night. Thanks for not putting me first.
It's all good. Uh, no, we, we took bids, uh, last week on the eighth, and we had five, we had five bidders. Uh, the bids have all been evaluated, it's my recommendation that we, uh, we, we give the, uh, award the project to branch construction. Uh, they were significantly lower than the other three bidders. Uh, if we go with them, they have saved the city a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, as their bid was three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven. And Matula Matula was four hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, I had a couple minor concerns about it, uh, looked through, I looked through their bids and evaluated it. And they're just, uh, they're just a little bit lower here and there on stuff, and it just, it just, uh, it just added up. Uh, I talked to them about it, made sure they was, because they left a significant amount of money on the table, that, uh, they, they were comfortable, and they, they was very comfortable, they did not, did they, that they could still make money at what they're, at the price that they put it in. And that, you know, they did not find something real gold that I missed, and is going to try to charge me, you know, some big change order and make that money up. Because that's always a concern of an engineer, when that happens, is to make sure that, did I miss something? And they're like, no, you didn't, you didn't miss anything, it's just, we're already doing work for the city, and we can, we can, we can do it for, for that amount. So it's my recommendation that, uh, move forward that.
Uh, Brian, very briefly, because it's been a long time since we authorized engineering on this project. Uh, can you just remind council of what the streets are, Jolly Roger and Montico Way and the base of the vodka?
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, Pelican Way, uh, Maguira Way, and, and, yeah, Houston Way, the Eden Way, and, uh, Matego Way, and, uh.
Can I say the vodka?
Yeah, that one, right. I'm an engineer, not an English major, sorry. English is my first language.
Engineer is your first language, English is your second, huh?
Yes. Uh, yeah, and then, so.
It is along Jolly Roger, it's all of the streets, uh.
Bob Smith.
Well, Smith, there is a section of Jolly Roger in the, in the alleyway.
Yeah.
And then down Bob Smith, the streets that go off from west to east, between Jolly Roger and the Bird Sanctuary. And then additionally, it is Pelican Way.
Yes.
Pelican Way.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, and there's a few more fire hydrants going into, to provide better fire safety, uh, for those houses.
Yes.
Okay, so two of them? Two more going in, yes.
No, there's.
Oh, there's.
Uh, I ended up, I ended up leaving them to the contract, because if it was too high, then we could take some out. And I, I added one at every street, I can add one. Uh, so there, we're adding, we're adding four, I think it's, I think it's four fire, four fire hydrants total.
Okay.
Uh, you know, technically, some of the streets were still in coverage, but when you start laying out fire hoses, cutting off traffic and things, I, I, I put it into the, there, designed it in to put through fire hydrants. So if there's one in the street, you're not, you're not blocking several streets with fire hoses to get it out, you know? If you're blocking house, if you're blocking one street and somebody wants to evacuate, you know, they can't evacuate, there are fire hoses across, so, anyway. So I just, uh, I put it in there, and it's still within budget, my budget, or my estimate was four hundred and twenty-four thousand, or four twenty-five, I think, was what my estimate was, so, I mean, it was well, 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 well within that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we had one quick question, yes, yes, Dan?
Yeah, and there on Montico Way, is there any way to add more fire plugs?
We are on.
Any other street or something?
Well, we are on, um, along Bob Smith. There's going to be one at each street down Bob Smith.
Which street are you on?
Montico.
Yeah, we're adding one at the end, at the end of your street.
Okay.
Sir?
Nothing.
Okay, do I, uh, have a, did I motion to discussion? I don't think so, no, we did, we motioned to discussion. Any other discussion, council? No? Do I have a motion to approve, um, resolution number twenty-two-three dash twelve?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay.
Authorizing to approve.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? All right, unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Well, one, one side note right quick, the, the fence, the fence was installed at the.
I heard it was going up today.
A side, a side lift station is, is complete, emergency controls will be here on Wednesday to install the new VFDs.
Thank you.
They, they, they're, they're on the way, they should be in tomorrow, so let me begin to.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, uh, is a, is a, I have a slight tweak to this, Esther. We need to, uh, we're looking at an additional council meeting on November thirtieth to conduct interviews for the city administrator, we've been requested that we start at five-thirty. Um, just to give plenty of time to interview all three, uh, the recommended candidates. So, um, I'm going to jump right to, do I have a motion to approve the additional council meeting on November thirtieth, twenty-two-three, with the modification to read at five-thirty instead of six? Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Always.
I know. Okay, uh, next on the mayor's report. Um, first of all, I know Alderman Welch already stated it, that you had a great turnout at the National Night Out and Halloween Party. A special thank you to the, all the first responders that came, um, ours and others. A special thanks to Sandy Denby, who organized a fabulous event, and the Rennicks did a great job, uh, executing her plan. Uh, I think fun was had by all, thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to applaud all the city engagement we're getting. Uh, the, I, I love the fact that people are paying attention, uh, and voicing, and voicing their concerns and helping us make Jamaica Beach the best it can be. Uh, we talked about the waterline project will get approv- will get approved, and, uh, that project will kick off in early January. Uh, we'll keep everybody apprised of, uh, potential outages and issues that occur with that. For those of you that reside along those streets, please don't hesitate to call us if there's concerns, issues, uh, things we need to be aware of and address. Um, we are currently vacuuming out, uh, fifteen years of sand and muck from the part of the sewer plant that's currently not operational. Uh, the plan for that is that by first quarter, we will have an estimate on what it's going to take to get that site up and running again. Uh, we currently, uh, don't need it, you know? However, when we get high tides and our system gets a lot of saltwater ingress, uh, as well as on those very busy weekends, when all of our very full STRs, uh, are here, then our sewer plant does start getting a little challenged. Uh, the other thing is our lift stations, we have seven of them, uh, they are all in, well, not all, we redid Blackbeard. Uh, Russell was, was, uh, helping with that previously, and that one's in great shape. But Lift Station Seven's currently being revamped, be, sounds like it'll be up and running next week. But the others are in bad shape, so we are doing that analysis and review right now. Uh, many of them only have one pump working, uh, rails are rotted off, uh, they don't have required nets in them, which, uh, the, is required by TCEQ. And also, uh, check valves are broken, we had another pipe burst, we were able to switch it to the other side. But we are, we are working on that, and there is money in the budget, we, council approved money in the budget to start revamping those lift stations to give us the security we know that we need to make sure we flush our toilets. Uh, we do have three candidates identified, there were twenty-five applicants, narrowed down to eight highly qualified. After the interview process, three have been recommended, and we will be bringing them to council on the thirtieth. Uh, we will go into executive session to interview them, but they will be here to meet any residents that would like to come, uh, see their face. So, uh, because it's late, I'm not going to go into a lot of the issues with the STRs, we're still talking, it's still making some tweaks to it. Uh, that'll still be coming out. I'd like to remind people that City Hall is closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, and offices will be closed Wednesday at one o'clock. Normally, our, our folks get Friday afternoons off, uh, but because it's already a holiday, uh, that's been moved to Wednesday. So that's the end of my mayor's report. Uh, at this point, uh, Robert, will you take a note for, could be to executive session?
Yeah, eight twenty-eight, eight P M.
And if anybody wants to go bring the Hudson in.